Ready to go. Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting of the public pump storage advisory committee to order. We have a moment of reflection, please. Hey, does anybody have any disclosure, pecuniary interest in general nature thereof? No. Public participation, members of the public are encouraged to provide the committee with their comments and questions. Presentations must be pre-arranged with Sue Brown, acting deputy clerk before the agenda is released. Members of the public who wish to make a deputation on a specific agenda item at the meeting must register in advance with Sue Brown by four P M on September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. By contacting pump storage at me for dot C A or five one nine by three eight, one zero six zero extension eleven seventy. Presentations are limited to ten minutes, deputations are limited to five minutes. I take it we have no presentations or deputations, it's being a special meeting. Okay, I guess we'll turn it over to Strategy Corp. Sue, would you like to make the introduction perhaps of our presenters or say whoever?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of tonight's special meeting of the committee is to hear from representatives from Strategy Corp. Strategy Corp was retained by the municipality a few years ago. As we are navigating through the collector community benefit agreement process. As you know that the there is a report on the council agenda for September the twenty second. To discuss options for moving forward. So we thought it would be a good opportunity for P S A to hear from Strategy Corp. In regards to more detail about what a community benefit agreement is. And with that, I'll pass it over to to John and Daniel from from Strategy Corp. There is a presentation that they'll go through and look forward to hearing from them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Everyone can hear me and okay. So first just introduce myself. Also, my colleague here can introduce himself. I guess you could share the microphone if you want to come up whenever. So my name is John Penner. I am a partner at Strategy Corp, a management consulting communications and government relations firm based out of Toronto. We are celebrating our thirtieth year of operation this year. And there we have about over a hundred employees across our disciplines. We have been involved in this project for, oh, I think the it was couple of two thousand twenty three I just saw a document from so for a number of years now. And my background specifically is I lead the energy and finance practices at Strategy Corp. And I was ten years in the federal government and was the lead federal negotiator on the lower Churchill hydroelectric project in in Newfoundland, which is a seven billion dollar project. And then went into the Canada Pension Plan Investment Board, which is one of the ten largest retirement funds in the world. Working on energy communications, E S G and many other elements of the of the business before I joined Strategy Corp and became a partner. So and Daniel here, happy to introduce himself. He's been working on the project since the beginning as well.
Hi, everyone. My name is Daniel Blazakovic. I'm a manager at Strategy Corp, been with the firm for about four years. And I specialize in working with municipal governments across a wide range of different projects and I work closely with John on different energy related projects as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So before we get into the community benefits agreement directly, first I thought it would be useful to explain. You know how we see our role as it relates to this project. You know, I think the first time I ever talked to a council member, I think Shirley actually had her offices in Toronto. Was, you know, our job has nothing to do with, you know, the discussion around the project itself. Should it go forward? Should it not go forward? We are purely involved in the community benefits agreement. So if the decision is for the project to go forward. Then the Ontario government has created a framework to which they would like to have and require to have. Energy projects have local approval from council and municipalities. So that they for the product to move forward, just because they've had lots of challenges in the past in Ontario with politically, most famously would be the Mississauga gas plants, if anybody remembers those from many years ago. So they have created that policy framework around energy projects and renewable projects in the southwestern Ontario also have had some rocky paths as well as it relates to community agreement. So they put this framework together. So our job is purely to advise and implement. We advise the municipality, we advise, we work with Sean, we work with the council. And we talk to them about the project and what they want to achieve through their discussions and then they also then tell us this is what we want you to do and we do it. That's it. So we're not, we're not environmental engineers. That would be a very different service. We are not, we're not lawyers, so we're not doing the legal work around this project. We are very much on the management consulting side advising on any sort of agreement. As a firm, we have worked on these types of agreements as it relates to everything from developments to gravel pits, aggregate my aggregates, mine projects. You know, waste storage dumps, et cetera. So we have a history of working on these types of engagements across Ontario. So that is just, you know, briefly, what we see is our role on this project. So I'm going to go to maybe the next slide. Oh, you have a good, thank you. Anyway, so this is what we're going to cover. It is one of the first items we produced for the municipality was a desktop research basically, and also just our own understanding of how does a community benefits agreement work? Why are they working? And what are the elements of a community benefits agreement that are useful for the municipality? And for the members of the municipality to know as it relates to them, just like very off the front, we'll just go to the next slide. Is community benefits agreements are new. Yeah, you could probably go back a lot of years and there's probably some agreements, but as a, you know, normal order of business, you know, a community benefits agreement being attached to a project. You know, it's not something that even ten, twenty years ago, you would have seen much happen. Usually it was a project would propose, they'd get some approval from a regulatory body and then go ahead. There would be community town halls for information sharing and these types of activities. But there was no formal agreement between the municipality and the project proponent. That really existed until very recently in the in the scale of infrastructure projects. They are usually very much on the large end of the scale. You're not, you know, if somebody's going to invest a million dollars in your community or something like that, it's not usually something that you'll see a big process around. So it's very much a large infrastructure project, which this certainly is a, it has a B, not an M in front of the cost of it. So that usually means it's a big project. So it's and it's it really just provides that framework so that it's it's a formal and it's transparent, right? Community members know what's been agreed to and community member and the project team knows what's been agreed to with the community. So it, you know, the 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 hope would be is that if there's a community benefits agreement between a project proponent and municipality. It takes away a lot of the temperature and acrimony that could possibly generate around a project because there has been a formal discussion, negotiation and agreement put in place at the end. So. So that's where we're going there. So structured, realistic, enforceable, transparent, outline. Everybody knows what's involved and we'll get into the different elements of what can be in a C A B, C B A, as we'll call, I'll just go to the acronym now. So that it doesn't take so much time and my voice could hopefully get through the presentation. And it's enforceable, right? So if one of the parties does not fulfill the agreement that was laid out publicly, then, you know, there can be recourse actions. Next slide. So flexibility is really important. So let's say. And there's an example, so I'm going to get ahead of myself, but I think the examples are really important for this, right? So one of the examples that we have in the deck is a casino, right? So a casino is a really interesting project because a casino is, you know, one of the biggest economic drivers of a community you could possibly think of. Thousands of people employed right in the middle of a town. It has high paying jobs to low paying jobs, but it also has huge social ills obviously attached to it from the gambling to whether it's, you know, drug disorderly conduct and money marks and such go above it, right? There's so it has both huge benefits and really strong negatives. And so you have a community benefit agreement as it relates to a casino is a very different type of agreement as let's call it a pump storage project. So a pump storage project, if it's done to the way, way the project proponent says it will be done is that you know, there's a front-ended level of disruption to the community, which is dump trucks, construction, noise. Late, you work on the lake, et cetera. And then there is ongoing environmental issues that we're not, as I said, I'm not going to be involved in. But you can, there'll be a review to go through those environmental concerns. But as it relates to, you know, community, it's, you know, obviously on a military base and there's about thirty people working there, right? It's high capex, low operating, very different. It's a very different project, a very different thing that you'd want to have and what you'd want. In, you know, if I was in a, doing a community benefits agreement for a for a casino, I might say, well, there's going to be a lot of drunken fighting. I want a better E R in my community, right? It's like, so there's these things that you're going to always have, and that's why it's very important to have what you're looking for be in relationship to the actual project that is being built and the flexibility around the actual discussion. And so if we want to keep going, so. So these are the basic buckets you find in most community benefits agreements, not sorry. These are the buckets you will find in community benefits. Most community benefits agreements won't have every single one of these though. So annual financial contribution, this is a, you know, simple method. Which is, you know, give me X amount of dollars, community, and it can be on an escalator or whatever. So it keeps up with inflation and, you know, as long as this project is in our community, I would like this much money. It's it's called oft often called all called something called a pilt, so a payment in lieu of taxes. So, you know, the biggest example of this would be airports. Airports do this all the time. They don't pay the taxes, they pay the pilt to the Mississauga airport for Pearson, for example, who we worked with in the past. Social procurement. So this is, this is a key element in in infrastructure projects, which is a project proponent could, you know, well, depending on what they're procuring, if you literally go anywhere around the world, right? And they will probably for different types of equipment where that's made. But often the case, especially say as an example, I think the most famous example in this area would be the Bruce Power Plant. There is an expectation that supply chain be local as much as possible. And to procure from the local businesses that helps build out the economy of the local region. So this is very common in these types of projects that we're talking about where they'll they'll ask for a municipality or a business chamber would say, I want to have preferential treatment for my own people. Community improvements. So I know all municipalities like recreational facilities for obvious reasons for the residents, whether that's ice rinks to splash pads to you know, everything in between. So this is often one of the asks of of communities is to have a community improvements. Parks, trails, that type of activity. And then environmental mitigation, which usually comes out through the environmental assessment process. Where, you know, famously, I think one of the pipelines, not by T C Energy, but by the project proponents. Maybe other company close from the same region had two hundred and thirty conditions to build a pipeline across Canada. And it was, you know, if you want to do this pipeline, you need to do these things in order to mitigate the impacts and also get the community outside. Obviously, also from horizontal infrastructure, there was Trans Canada's trans, sorry, Trans Mountain Pipeline in B C as well, which is a very famous, famous example of this just very recently on the environmental impacts. As well as equity agreements. So, you know, I'm not here to talk about indigenous relations, but part of a lot of the discussion is, you know, equity participation. And I believe that there's a discussion around that with the local nation song, which is also not just a benefit, but a you have to put money in, right? You're a partner, you're an equity partner, you're expected to be a part of the business. So next, next slide. So these are the examples. I already talked about the casino in Woodbine. But these are some pretty interesting examples if you take them across, but the Gordie Howe International Bridge, which is a very important project to diversify our, you know, our connections into the U S away from one certain bridge that doesn't need to be named. It was incredibly large project and very disruptive to the community. Eglington Crosstown and Finch West L R T is something that was, I think, supposed to have become operational about over ten years ago. And it's still not operational to this day. And you can think through every intersection in Toronto that has been closed for that time. And there was obviously agreements, a large amount of negotiation agreements between local communities and the project proponents, which is really the province, but also met metro. So there. And we can, we can go through in more detail the questions that people have. So, you know, I would just say is that these are the generally the categories to which you should expect once you have a C B A in place. So community oriented, defined, accountable and transparent. And it reaches your objectives. So we, at this point, I would just say is you know, discussions have begun, but they are not, as it relates to this project. We're not at the point of any sort of presentation on what do we think a reasonable community benefits agreement would be on this project. Though happy to hear input from the community members on on the thoughts of everybody, everybody around the table. So. Yeah, I think that's that's our quick presentation, but we are here to take any questions and happy to answer as as we can.
I have a question just regards to so on a project, just a very rough big estimate, that's where say seven to ten billion dollars, say what average value in your experience? Would you expect annual community benefit agreement to be? And or what is, what's something that you've seen in the past and what type of community projects have you seen in the past with that size dollar value?
So, okay, so I'll try to, let me do a few things here first before we get into questions like. Project value, it's, I mean, obviously, you know, as I said, projects that don't have a B in front of them often don't really have community benefits agreements attached to them. But it's also like if I'm spending ten billion dollars and nobody in the community will ever see, like, there will be no dump trucks on the road. There will be no impact to the community in the slightest, the community benefits agreement for that could be zero, right? Because there is no impact to the community in a theoretical sense, right? Versus, you know, that casino I talked about in the middle of town, that that transforms the entire community no matter what. Like, there's just no going back after this happened. Everything is different. So from those two extremes, you know, you have to place the project into that, you know, that matrix is to what is the impact? And I think there's going to be some studies to show. It's very important to base that on fact, right? So I know there's discussion around different studies that can be procured to actually start quantifying that impact. So it's not quantifying the cost of the project, which is still also not known because they're going through a new costing for the project. So we don't even know what the cost of the project is at this point fully. And then we're more important though is quantifying the impact on the community and the environment and all these buckets that we're talking about. Then you can get into a discussion as to what the cost of it is. So, I mean, yeah. So I would just say, and and finally, I think it's important to note is that the customer on this project, right? So any energy project in Ontario's market. The customer is the taxpayers of Ontario, right? If energy goes on the grid and it powers the businesses and the residencies of here. So the customer could also have a view as to how much a community benefits agreement should be because it is also precedent setting for other communities and the province. So, so I would say with that caveat is that I can't answer that question in any sort of great specifics. But I mean, while the project is a B, I can say that the community benefits agreement will be an N.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question kind of falls in line of timelines. When is a community benefits agreement expected to kind of be penned versus the beginning of the project? Is it, should it be in place before the project is officially started? What are, what are our timelines that we're working on or should be working on?
Yeah, it's a very good question. And I, I don't think every party has agreed to timelines at this point, other than some broad discussions. So I don't have an answer, a specific answer on that, other than to say is large project like Mississauga gas plant, I brought it up at the beginning, right? They went down a huge path and then community destroyed it, right? Politics, whatever you want to call it, right? So the project proponent and the municipality for other reasons want to be involved closer into the beginning of the process because from the project proponents perspective and, you know, chair of government and what they've said, we're going to be like, I want to risk this project so that I know I'm not going to fall into that trap that these other projects have had and spending hundreds of million dollars that I'm never going to recoup because they get rejected. So I would say generally sooner rather than later. You want to have a framework, but a framework will also probably, because it's sooner, will also have to have conditions, right? Because EA process won't be done if it's sooner than the EA process, right? So if you're going to do anything, a framework before the EA process, it has to be saying subject to a successful EA and us understanding the environmental impact, right? But I think that generally speaking, it should be done pretty relatively quickly. Hopefully you would expect in the next year or two to have a framework in place between the community.
Deputy Mayor, evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just start with this one question. It's good to see you again, John and Daniel. Thank you for making the trip to meet. Um, could we talk about the process in terms of how we sort of get started? How do you see P S A participating? And what about public engagement? Do you oversee that part of the of the process? Can you just talk to us a little bit about sort of what the next steps are from this understanding today?
So next steps for a public engagement perspective, there's the P S A, like I I I can assist Sean and whatever the municipality would like to do from a public engagement. And certainly we've done public engagements in the past. But as to how we see that going, I defer to the municipality on how they would like to proceed with that. But obviously there's the P S A committee, which is an organ of that type of discussion. The next steps as it relates to the project proponent from a is, you know, I would say is a series of working groups, right? It's the a series of discussions structured on the topics at hand that then gets presented to the public and to council for approval. To say, this is what we think is the best approach. This is why we think it's the best approach. Here's the, all the information that has surrounded that discussion. And then there will obviously be the democratic debate. As somebody who's worked in politics their whole life, I fully respect. And it's up to council and the and the people of the population to say, yes, yay or nay. But I think, you know, those discussions between the project proponent and the municipality, which will help facilitate and work with will be key to come to a common understanding of what the expectations are around the agreement and with council, obviously.
Yes, I'm just asking, why could it be already two hundred and eighty five?
Excuse me, excuse me, public questions are allowed in this forum? No, I don't.
That was my bad too, because I kind of, I didn't know.
My apologies. I'm Council Greenhill.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Through you to our presenter, I do have two or three questions. Page five, the scale and economic value of the project influence the types and scope of commitment sought.
It's good, there we go.
I interpreted it as, and correct me if I'm wrong. If I'm assuming the economic value of the project could be either to the community or to the the company that's doing the project. So I I kind of like to know which which is, which economic value we're really talking about here. Now, the second part of the question is, am I to assume that the larger the economic value of the project, the larger the economic value to the community is? And if so, is there is there a percentage, a standard percentage, like if it's five billion, is it five billion? Is there any, any groundwork in in the past to represent these kind of figures?
So, okay, so I'll start with the economic value that we can get to the percentage. And I think there are a couple of, but like, as I said, there is also very new. So as it relates to the economic value, I would say that there's three economic values at Broad's face. One, one is for the province and their energy needs and the ability to meet those needs and of an expanding grid. There's the economic value for T C Energy. My understanding is that at this point, at least there'll be a rate regulated return through a government procurement. So that will be a very publicly stated economic value for T C Energy. And then there will be the economic value for the for the community. And on the economic value for the community, you can also break that down, right? So if you wanted to look at the economic value, there's the economic value for the community as represented by a municipality. And there's the economic value as it is related to those who are private sector participants in the community. So then so to put that out there is your question on percent is the value for the municipality of Meaford, while supply chain benefits would be the value for the actual members of the community from a private sector proponent. So that being also restaurants and like route worker, you know, people buying goods and services of the community. So both are important buckets and you shouldn't lose touch with either, right? Because I find that if you're a member of the Chamber of Commerce, you'll probably focus on the latter. And if you're a member of the municipality, you'll probably focus on the former. But I think that the local businesses will want to have a very strong But I think that the local businesses will want to have a very strong framework. Which may impact also the percentage that goes into the community's coffers. So now to get to the percentage on the economic value. I think it was very similar to the question of Ms. Jenny. Is, I know that there has, Bruce is probably a. Often used as a possible corollary. There's also a natural gas plant. That has been built in Ontario recently, that has also been used as a possible corollary. And then there is the some of the examples that we have in the presentation. And each of those have very different percentages. And so, you know, could I say 10% right now? I mean, that's. I I would say don't because like it's not, it's like, it 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 there, there's no. Until we've done that legwork and it's like very, very, like I would say, Sean, you know, one meeting so far. In the new process, I guess, and we will be having further meetings. Until those have happened, I I just like it's, it would be. Irresponsible for for me to put a percentage into the public domain, I think, at this point. So I I I have, you know, yeah, I would just say it'd be irresponsible. I just would not, because either it would sway one way or the other on the discussion with the community. But when that number is presented. And it could be presented as a percentage of the project, or it could be presented just as a relation to a lot of different figures. There will be a justification attached to it as to why we took that percentages we feel is strong and the city thinks is strong and will give the reasons. But until that works out, I feel it's presumptuous for me to put it out there.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I'll have some other questions and they'll likely demand a much longer answer.
Ah, there we go, fair enough. Always always happy. Always enjoy our conversations, Castle.
I I guess in, if we're going to keep on the the track of money here. It says that the the CBA on page four is a legally enforceable agreement that is binding. Based on the impact of various different factors. I don't know of a single construction project that stays on target or doesn't get altered partway through. So what portion of this community benefits agreement is flexible? In both ways, whether it starts impacting the community more throughout the process, are we able to increase that and vice versa? If the project changes and things are scaled back, are we as a community? Worried that that could start to shrink? Yeah. So where does that community benefit have that flexibility?
Yeah, and I I alluded to this at the beginning, which is the conditionality if you go earlier. And, you know, thank you for the point, because it has been on our mind as well, like as an example is. It's going to be. I wouldn't necessarily call it a community benefits agreement, but there's going to be a series of studies that Sean. And and the, you know, administration will take with qualified experts to say, what is the traffic pattern? When should dumpsters go? Like all of those elements, which are going to be in some ways more important for the community, such as those who are getting impacted by it. And that's going to be incredibly important. We've already talked about this with the project proponent to have very clear lines of communication. And discussion on how that's going to work in the best way possible. So first answer to the question is that hopefully that process as it is created mitigates those impacts. As much as possible and they're known, but I I think that that will be a continual discussion between your CAO and the staff of Meaford. And the project proponent as it's happening, because it will happen. And as you say. Things will happen that nobody foresaw and it'll just be the case. But on the conditionality, it it is. Something that is on our mind and it is something that we'll have to discuss, but it will have to be. Yes, there will be the environmental assessment process, there will be what happens in between. Or, you know, something happens that is outside of anybody's thoughts and then we'll have to have a, you know, a straightforward discussion with everyone on on those aspects. But I I can't, I can't say what those would be.
So if I'm to understand this correctly, we're expected to bake into this community benefits agreement a little bit of wiggle room. Nothing is hard and fast per se. We should expect some back and forth?
I think there's going to be studies and there's going to be a lot of back and forth as it relates to the direct impacts of construction. Like that's just going to have to be the case, because it's going to be, you know, in a procurement perspective, it's, you know, there will be a. You know, dump truck that goes off the road and like dumps the load on somebody's like, you know, these types of things you just that that. It's not going to be encapsulated within a community benefits agreement, because it has to be encapsulated within. A process that is agreed to between the municipality and the project proponent on how to deal with those issues. As it relates to other elements, but certainly in the environmental assessment process, any CBA has to be. Conditional on that, just because if the environmental assessment process comes back with some very negative news for the community. There would have to obviously be a discussion on those points as it relates to construction activity. It's certainly something we can take away and have a discussion with Sean and others. And what what is the other conditionality that we need to add to the agreement?
Deputy Mayor, evening.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. John, a couple of things, I believe I've heard you say, we're looking at doing this socio-economic readiness study. I believe I've heard you reference that and that you're definitely feeling that's an important step for us to take in correlation with the work that you would be doing. So that's, that's good to hear. In terms of a timeline, I heard you mention one to two years and you'll be aware that we have an election coming up in October of 2026. So not thinking that's the best time to be doing public engagement and so on. We would kind of like to see something in place. Well, prior to that.
I said no later than two years. Give myself some wiggle room, but obviously I think it is up to the council as to when they would like to do the agreement.
Thank you. So Adam's question in terms of the flexibility, I just wondered further to that. Once we get the CBA agreed to and it's and it's signed. Is that kind of it? If this is assumed to be a 50 or 75 year project, or should it be revisited every 10 or 20 years? Do we just, do we just build enough escalation clauses that we are, you know, comfortable with with that long term? You know, payment or whatever that turns out to look like, or should it have a clause in it where it is revisited at points in time?
Yeah, I think there has to be, there's going to have to be a clause of some sort as it relates to the time. Because it's as you say, it's an infrastructure project, it's going to be, and it'll probably be refurbished after a while, because, you know, you want to keep the lifespan of these projects going as long as possible. Because it's a huge capex. So I think there's two ways you can do it. And we're not at the point of discussing what is the the right way, but there is the, you know, clause every 10 years. We're going to revisit and discuss it. Or it's, you know, here's, here's the, let's, let's, I'm just, I don't want to be held to numbers, as I said. But I want to do a little sort of example is, you know, $1 million the first year, but obviously there's such a thing as inflation in 70 years. $1 million will be worth nothing. So we're going to have an inflation calendar, right? A CPI. So. You know, the CPI of Canada is between a 1 to 3% target, but obviously it goes up and we'll just do it on a CPI basis. It's going to go up by that percentage every year based upon that. You know, that's one way as well of dealing with the future. So, you know, I don't, we're not at the point of deciding which way, but I think that, yes, there has to be something. To deal with the passage of time. But, you know, the one challenge I would say with a renegotiation escalation clause. Is the capital investment is made, the project is in the ground, it is operating. The province, and it's the province at that point who will be paying for the billions of dollars of that cost. And the province will probably say, that's nice that you. You can't stop the project we spent, we've spent billions of dollars. So this is not, this is not, you know, we're going to shut down this investment that we spent money on. And is powering Ontario's energy, right? So at that point, I think it's actually less of a conversation with TC Energy. And more of a conversation with the Ontario government, who is actually procuring the rate regulated energy. So, but yeah, I think that you'll have to take that into account as well.
I may, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, John, and I hope you're not planning to retire anytime soon.
Is it possible that there will be multiple agreements? Like I see during the period of construction. The John Q public is going to be more affected. Once the plant's up and running, not as much hopefully. But the municipality will be looking, I think, for their piece of the body, like, or would that all be one agreement?
So I know Sean and I, we've discussed, there is a community benefits agreement and the framework of which will be decided. And that will be for the community because of the impacts on the project. But within this framework, there's a lot of topics that are going to be dealt with on the side. So like I just mentioned, the community benefit, uh, community readiness agreement and discussion in that study. So, yes, there has to be something to figure out, how are we going to deal with the congestion? How are we going to deal with the noise? How are we going to deal with the wells that are near the site? I know on private property. So all of those elements will be dealt with as to whether it's in the community benefits agreement is. I don't, I think the community benefits agreement will be probably be a little narrower focus just on the broader discussion. But all the other elements, all these things that I, everybody in the community, I think if everyone's brought up on this table. Yes, those will always obviously have to be addressed in a manner. And I think a lot of that is actually process, just that. Everyone is able to react quickly between the city and this.
Or, excuse me.
So, yeah, so. But no, I think that everyone, I I think everyone around the table and the project proponent, I think is in their interest even as well is that. There is a system in place to deal with any issues broader than the benefits agreement. And I don't think anybody, the project proponent or anybody has suggested otherwise. I think they're very well aware of this as well. And want to have as smooth of a relationship with the community as possible.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess just to elaborate on on the previous question or carry on with it. There are got, there are going to be some members of this community that are affected more than others. Does the community benefits agreement generally? The interface between the proponent and the municipality, and then it's the municipality's responsibility to kind of disseminate. Those benefits, so to speak, or is there more? Specific wording in a community benefits agreement that deals, like you say, with people with with wells and things like that? Is that? More drilled down in the document or that's up to the municipality?
So as it relates to, like, say, the wells or traffic or supply chain. Is that there will be a series of studies that will be undertaken to understand the impacts and then also come to an agreement on how best to manage them. As it relates to the community benefits agreement, let's just say, the only thing that the community benefits agreement has is it's going to have a yearly cash figure, right? I I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying, let's just say it does, say it's $5 million. As within every democracy, it's not going to be TC Energy, it's not going to be the project, it's going to be Diesel Snap. That's the city council. That's that's politics. So it's the best place and how to spend it. And the administration and staff will all have that discussion. And I'm sure the community will have inputs into how they think it should work. But it is, yeah, it's a democracy and we have local governments for that very reason.
As as a maybe specific that you could elaborate on. I spoke to at the Meaford Fall Fair, one of the cooperators, insurance adjusters. And I asked about this project and people living around it. And they responded with, oh, well, their their water insurance rates may go up. Would that kind of a subsidy for the people who are directly affected by this project, who have their. Their home insurance rates increase? Would that be something that is baked into an agreement like this? That if somebody is directly affected by the creation of this project, can we as a municipality? Or or is that a different framework?
I would, my my feeling on it now, without having gone into the specifics yet, as we said, we have one meeting. And Sean, maybe you have your, expect your feelings on this as well. So I don't want to get ahead of the municipality. Is the insurance around the wells has been something that has been brought up. It is on the agenda to be worked out. And to come to an agreement that is satisfactory for the residents who are affected by the insurance issues. So I think that that certainly is one of the biggest issues that has been brought up. As to the mechanism for how it will be resolved. That has not been decided yet. But yes, I think it is very much on the agenda of everybody who's been around the table that this is something that has to be done with.
I guess the answer to my question is it may or may not be part of this document?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, we haven't, we've had one meeting. We have not talked about what the mechanism will be, just that. It is a well-known, I think, everybody at council knows about it, every resident knows about it. I know Sean knows about it. I know the project proponent understands the issue as well. I don't think anybody has said. Around the table, we don't have to deal with that issue. I think everyone knows they have to deal with the issue. It's just, what is the mechanism?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And just to speak to Mr. Vaughn's point. One of the things that we we have done is we, when Kim was here, we were actively looking at getting a formal response. From insurance. There's a real danger in this forum, and I'd like, if maybe afterwards I can get the individual's name that you were talking about. When you have a public forum like this and we talk about individual companies and 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 when we talk about. Statements that are being made. We want to be able to provide fact through a very clear question to insurance. Because sometimes the way it's framed. I know a lot of people wouldn't actually give that information out, because unless you get right into the details. It's hard to provide a factual response. So for them to say, yeah, you know what, your insurance might go up. What we're trying to do is go to the insurance company saying, here, here's your question. Can you provide some information? Because I've heard that from from a few different people, members of public saying, well, these individuals will lose their insurance. What about flood insurance? So we're trying to go to the source with very clear questions. So we can provide information in a very, you know, clear and transparent way. So the public has as as good of information as they possibly can get. I will also say that, you know, part of the environmental process and the application process that they'll go through. For the proposed project, when and if they make application. We want to make sure that that environmental environmental assessment. Like goes beyond the property line, right? So so those are the things that we're very actively making sure that that would, that would be the case. The last thing I just want to mention as well, because I think it's very prudent in the discussion, is. When we talk about a CBA right now. We do not have. Direction as of now to go forward with a CBA, a community benefit agreement. Or a community benefit agreement by law. That's what we're going to be dealing at council on Monday. So. You know, this is why I wanted to make sure that we had this discussion with Strategy Corp to explain CBA. And it's it's a framework that the province has, but I do not want. The committee or members of the public here where we're watching. Pre-assuming that we are going through a community benefit agreement, because council has yet to provide that direction. This was, you know, what is a CBA? The bylaw is a completely different animal. The bylaw is not a mutually agreed upon agreement. A bylaw is an infant of council. That is approved by council. There is no partner with a bylaw. So the recommendation that I proposed for the 22nd is that council consider moving. Towards the community benefit agreement. It is a, it is a framework that is established. uh, towards the community benefit agreement. It is a, it is a framework that is established. Um, and it allows for an agreement to be, uh, developed. And again, it is not, and I had this discussion with, with Strategy Corp of, um, because I've had members of the public ask me, why are you doing a, a community benefit agreement when, um, TC Energy hasn't even made application? And, um, Mr. Penner identifies as he did tonight. Um, it is also about de-risking the project because if they're looking at, uh, it's beneficial. If we're saying this is what the community is looking for, for a community benefit agreement. That's also a number or things that can be considered when they are doing their financial de-risking. So, um, I just want to make it clear that this is not the presumption of moving forward with that agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council great field.
Again, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Mr. Everett for, uh, uh, for that. On page six, it, it, uh, your presentation talks about the, uh, various types of financial commitments for various areas. I, I'm pleased to see the, the fourth item, uh, on here and it's environmental mitigation. Now, contributions to offset, remediate or mitigate environmental impacts associated with the project construction. Um, as I say, I'm glad to see that on there, uh, because, uh, that particular subject, uh, uh, pertains to a lot of people. How, how do you do that? These environmental impacts, uh, could occur right from construction time or could show up maybe 15 years later. Uh, in George and Bailey, um, can can you write something like that into an agreement, like a long-term, uh, it's easy to do to work around short term, but there's something in the future that can, can be directed back to the, to the project. Is that, uh, is that possible?
So, um, uh, I think we have a chief legal counsel who always tells me on these types of questions is, um, we're not a law firm, so do not take my advice as law. Uh, I, you know, there will be a, a legal team attached to that, uh, those questions about the future. Uh, and what is it that you can do? I think agreements are agreements in time though. So, um, and then also I would say is that the province has uh, um, a very robust, uh, environmental framework in terms of, uh, uh, how they deal with environmental impacts that happen after the fact. I was just working on a project that had a, a environmental order on it from, uh, a building that was, uh, that was creating environmental effects that they built 40 years before, right? So it, there is a framework that's in le- legal, uh, language, which I won't get into. Um, but, uh, construction and operation and, uh, on environmental impacts. Uh, I think that, uh, the impacts from construction and the impacts from operation are going to be very different. But on the construction side, um, it is, uh, one of the most important parts of, I think, looking at the project is where do the trucks go? What about the dust? What about like every possible impact? And, you know, as I've said is, uh, and working with Sean is, you know, these are studies that will be in, uh, will be, take place uh, prior to any activity, uh, so that, uh, council, the city, project proponent, community. Now, this is how this will work and this is how we mitigate. But as to now, those, uh, those studies will take a very long time, uh, to start producing. Um, and we'll be done with engineers, not myself. So I, I can't, uh, I can't, uh, claim to know what they will come up with.
Jenny.
My, uh, question's a little bit of a follow-up to Adam's when he was talking about the insurance side of things. Um, I'm just curious, as part of the agreement, people that are, um, have a reduced quality of life due to the project. So say their houses are rattling or say who, who knows, whatever if they had something, a peaceful environment and they now no longer. If something like that put into an agreement where their diminished quality of life is affected and that somehow maybe their taxes change because it's not a prime area anymore, or maybe, I don't know, how does, is that ever brought into the agreement in any way, shape or form?
Uh, I would say it's a community benefits agreement, not a, an agreement for each residency, right? Um, those are impact issues that will have to be discussed and, uh, council and, uh, the local representatives. And they'll come together in studies that we've talked about, but like, I've never seen a community benefits agreement that says, you know, residency, you know, 50 part lawn shall receive, you know, $100,000 every year because of X, right? Like, um, but, uh, you know, certainly I know on the minds of the, um, of the city and the counselors and, and it has been discussed.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Keed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as we talk about, uh, the construction and recognizing that those main roads are county roads. And I know that's a separate discussion with the county, but just not knowing at this point what that looks like. Or if there's some sub clause for the county, I have no idea. Um, but, uh, coming back to the point of insurance, I think for your benefit, the element in the room certainly is the reservoir. And people are genuinely concerned about the reservoir above them. So I think a thorough discussion with insurance is certainly warranted to bring some comfort, hopefully, to those who will be living below that, assuming the project, uh, goes forward. But my question is in relation to was something I found very interesting here. Alignment with broader policy objectives, connecting commitments to municipal goals. So, you know, this, we've got some time ahead of us now and we will potentially be renewing our OP or looking at our road sodies or, you know, some of our other strategic plans or economic development plans and so on. And just thinking about how we integrate the CBA, you know, in relation to those plans and how everything comes together, um, you know, may turn out to be a really valuable, interesting and necessary exercise. So that we do make sure that everything we're requesting in the CBA will align with, you know, whatever changes may be required by the municipality to make in any of our own master plans. I mean, I think that's a big, broad topic, but just something I hope we can, uh, communicate, um, you know, in relation to all of that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we want to do a community readiness study, right? And a community readiness study hopefully should bring out all of those issues, especially with the county roads that we know has been brought up before. Um, and so, uh, you know, before we have that, it's, it's very hard to get into the specifics of like, we should have a community benefits agreement that takes into account X, Y and Z impact. Cause we need to know what the impacts are, which is what the, the readiness study should do. Um, and then on the other side, when doing the community benefits agreement to, uh, mitigate those impacts and to, uh, get compensated for ones that can't be mitigated, uh, is, um, you know, you kind of have two approaches, right? So like we have four buckets here. There's different ways you can do this. One, one of them is just the hardwired approach where you hardwire that issue into an agreement and say, I want compensation X for that. So, or I believe that, uh, this is going to hurt my community, uh, recreation. Because next I want to, recreation center to compensate for. That's like a hardwired. Here's a problem. Here's a solution. The other side is just a soft, soft wire. I'll call it soft wire, but software. It's just like, I want this much money to deal with these impacts. And then as to how it gets divvied up after that. And it's going to change throughout the years, obviously with like, you know, like 20 years from now, who knows, like what you would want to, to use the money for is that's for council in a public manner, who will have to put their names on a ballot and say, I stand behind, I think that's the best way to use this money, which is the rest of the budget is the same way that municipalities work. Um, then you say, I think this is the, the best way to which we could use, uh, the community benefits agreement that we have now um, signed up to mitigate X impacts. So you can either have like a, a straight through or it's impact agreement, agreement does X. It says we're going to do this to mitigate, or it's like impact quantification in the, uh, agreement, money. Council decides money where it goes. And then that those are the two approaches you can take. But as, you know, as I think Sean has rightfully said, is, uh, there is a discussion at council and there is no guidance.
See you, Everett.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just on, on slide, uh, six, uh, where we talk about the four categories. And I'm not, I'm not sure if this is going to be a helpful, uh, comparison, but when I look at the c- community benefit agreement. The annual financial contribution and the community improvement, um, best way I can frame it is it's, it's very similar to development charges. Where as a developer comes into the municipality, um, they are responsible to provide development charges to fund future growth. Um, the CBA is somewhat like that. Um, one thing that the Development Charges Act requires is your development charges are based on a study that clearly identifies what we are collecting dollars for. Specific prob- uh, projects. So if, you know, we have five or six developments and they're driving the, um, uh, increase in, in population, uh, we can purchase dump trucks, plow trucks, uh, playground equipment, uh, indoor recreation, um, that is specifically to future growth. This is very similar in, in a way, but I will say the one thing that municipality, uh, I've been here five and a half months. The community readiness, uh, and the community social economic readiness plan is desperately needed because I can tell you I'm knee-deep in 2026 budget right now. And there's not one project that has any funding sources from TC Energy through a collective, uh, um, community, uh, benefit agreement. That's where we need to get to. Where we identify these are the projects that have a community benefit that we would say as part of a uh, the agreement that, you know, we're going to do this road or we are going to build this arena or we're going to do this medical clinic. That's, that's the granular that we have to come up with to really be able to understand what is the number we're asking for. Um, and I've had lots of people come up to me and say, well, you know, ask for a community center. This municipality has not done a multi-use recreation feasibility study in a timely enough fashion to be able to say, what does the community need in a recreation facility? Those are the things that quite frankly, we need to move forward on. So we can be in a position to be able to say through this community benefit agreement, this is the number that we're looking for. Because we're, we're not guessing. We know that this is what we need to be able to further the business and, and grow the community the way we are. So it's a really, it's, it's a framework that I think is, that we can use to look at how do we do that project funding piece, um, and then the social procurement, uh, and the ec- uh, environmental mitigation. Two incredibly important pieces, um, not as similar for the DC piece, but, um, I just say that we have a very similar process and mechanism already that we utilize that we can utilize very similar for this, uh, uh, community benefit agreement.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Keed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to, uh, to thank you, Sean, and reiterate that, uh, you know, we are behind on getting these studies completed. Because the reality is TC Energy's been around this community since 2019 and they pay their bills. But we have not received one discretionary dollar as a municipality. And there has been a lot of time invested and some disruption to this community. And it is high time that we get moving on this process and start to see some funding come back in to support us. And to, you know, acknowledge the time that has been invested by the public, by council, by staff. Because, uh, again, I mean, they, they've been good to support community events and so on and, uh, do pay their invoices. But we've not seen one dollar that we can invest in the study Sean has mentioned or in anything else. And it's, so we need to get it moving, John. We're gonna get past Monday and we'll need you to get moving.
Certainly, uh, Sean and I have discussed this thing and, and TC Energy knows. And I think, uh, I think there's an openness, I would say, to hopefully a quick announcement on that path.
Hey, Jenny.
I didn't bring the agenda with me. Is there public questions tonight or no?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Oh, there isn't? Oh, it's not on the agenda, so. Oh, okay. So there will be other questions. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. Any other questions from members of the committee? Great. Um, John and Daniel, I'd like to thank you very much for informing us much better on the, uh, community benefit agreement. I think we generated some good discussion here, so that's, that's good to see. Um, at what point are we going to put in the public questions to? Great, thank you. Okay, it'll be at the end of the meeting. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, there's no committee inquiries. Um, communications, the committee will consider correspondence received by members of the public during each meeting. To share your comments, thoughts or concerns with members of the committee, the public can send an email to pumpstorage@meaford.ca. When emails are received to this email address, they will be compiled into a correspondence list, which is then distributed to committee members prior to the meeting. The cover sheet of this list will be included on each meeting agenda. The contents of the correspondence list are not included in the public agenda to protect the privacy and personal information of those residents who choose to send in their thoughts and comments. Okay, I'd like to open the floor then to public questions. We have 15 minutes for that. Sure, please. Oh, could you, yeah. Could you state your name, please?
It's, uh, Paul Young. I'm resident of Meaford. Um, my question is very similar to one that's been asked a couple of times, but I'm going to ask it differently and hopefully get a more concise answer. Um, regarding the, um, environmental impact stuff and the benefits agreement. And the insurance question came up a couple of times. I'm more, most interested in remediation. Uh, language being put into the community benefits agreement such that to speak to the wells example. If there is a decrement to the water quality of multiple people, uh, that are in the impact zone for this. Is it practical that have other community benefits agreements included this? Is it practical in your opinion, not a promise, uh, for there to be a, a remediation clause? Well, and I'll give you an example of what that would look like. If there's say 40 or 50 people whose wells become unusable. Would the community benefits agreement hard, hard document the fact that TCE would be on the hook to put in water delivery from the town water system for those people that are affected? It's very, very specific. In other words, if the quality falls below a certain thing, TCE will pay a hundred percent of the charges to add the following homes to the town water delivery. Has any CBA ever done anything like that?
I, uh, maybe it's better to not get, uh, hung up on CBA. Um, I would just say is that, uh, remediation of those types of issues by a major infrastructure proponent is standard. Does it have to be through a CBA or is it? Yes, if they, if, 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 if there's a well, the council especially, right? It would certainly be on council's direction as to what they would like to do in that scenario. But I believe that most like, uh, uh, in a high variety, very fact is that, um, there would be a discussion with TC Energy. Your project has, uh, uh, made the wells unusable. These properties are unusable. Uh, we need town's water supply and you have to pay for it. And I think that, uh, I don't, uh, I can't speak for the project proponent. But I don't, I think that that is a very, very common, uh, item in, uh, whether it's a community benefits agreement or just any kind of project that goes forward.
Okay, but they have, they have more lawyers than I do.
Yeah, it, but it's, um, that's, that's, that's fair, but it's, uh, it's not about the lawyers. It's more, probably more about, uh, the insurance companies. And I, I do represent, uh, the largest P and C insurer co- country. And, um, they work off of facts. Like they will go through it and see what is the impact? What's the impact on the premiums? What's the risk? Uh, uh, risk, uh, underwriting and actuarial work is incredibly complex. Uh, but they will tell what's going to be the impact and, um, Uh, but they will tell what's going to be the impact and, um, council and, uh, uh, and agreements can, will certainly very much, whether it's through a CBA or another side agreement, will have, that is a very common thing that a, a company will be required.
I'm trying to keep it, I'm trying to keep it short. I'll just add on to the end. If there's a burden of proof on, let's say, community members to prove the decrement to the waters and the wells, who pays for the studies to do that burden of proof?
Environmental assessment process, it would be the project proponent through the EA process, uh, whether it's federal, provincial, et cetera, uh, they are required, uh, to fund the process.
Okay, um, there's a snowball's chance in hell happening, actually. Um, Doug Ford has waved his magic wand. I'll, I'll stop talking now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your question. Yes.
Yes.
Could you state your name, state your name, please?
Grisenda, Grisenda Borges Maloney. Is it on? Yes. Yeah, okay. Um, this question is for the council. Why wasn't this CBA, um, um, an item that should have been done before two hundred eighty-five million dollars got given to TC Energy by our Ford government? There's a, a big drilling rig out there. So why didn't this committee propose have this beforehand, before a decision was made?
CEO Weber, thank you.
Um, I'll take a, a swing at that. Um, so from the standpoint of the, uh, work that's being currently done and, and, uh, the funding, uh, that TC Energy received from the province, um, that's part of the due diligence and that is part of the, um, redevelopment work. So that's outside of the community, uh, benefit agreement. And really this entity, um, um, Storage Advisory Committee isn't the approving body. Um, that, that will be, that'll be council. But I will say that, you know, the community benefit agreement bylaw, uh, went through a process with a formal public meeting, um, which is actually, um, you know, more transparent and, and, uh, more public engagement than a typical process would be. And it was, it was actually good to hear from the, the residents. But this, this CBA has nothing to do with the pre-development work with, uh, TC Energy. So hopefully that is response to the question.
Yeah, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would just add, um, you know, a community benefit agreement has been part of the language for some years now. But as the CAO has added, the timing wasn't right because the project still really isn't a project. I mean, they are still, you know, just in the very early stages. And it really, it wasn't until the province committed the funding to go forward with these, as Sean has said, pre-development studies, that the timing really became appropriate to have this conversation. So it, it isn't that, you know, we haven't talked about it and I do believe that TC Energy wants to get this in place as much and as quickly as we do. I think everybody's on board now to move forward in this direction, but the timing just was not correct um, prior to the province, um, committing those funds for these early stages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question on chicken and, chicken and egg. Um, I'm not sure how we can get into a community benefit agreement without property taxes being established. And I'm not sure how property taxes can be established until we know the cost of the project, the valuation of the project and what taxable status it has. I understand it's on the range, which has special situation taxes. So do we have any clarity on property taxes? So how are we going to move forward on this community benefit?
Yeah, I would say is, uh, the project proponent probably answer that, um, uh, I would, I would note it's on military grounds. Uh, so that would certainly, um, affects what, uh, that would look like comparatively to any other kind of development in the area, but I'm not an expert on that. And, uh, yeah, so.
Uh, the normal assessment would be, I assume about one percent of the cost of the project. Ten billion dollars, one percent, a hundred million dollars a year. So when we're talking community benefit, and as this gentleman spoke to PILT, payment in lieu of taxes, I'd hope you'd think in terms of a hundred million dollars a year, at least in terms of community benefit, because that is what the tax would be. It doesn't have to start in year one of construction. It can be graded in over a period of time. I believe it has happened, if it was several projects, and this gentleman could probably tell you more about that when the choices come up. Um, second question, has Ainsley and associates had a look at this, uh, proposal, community benefits, because they were nominated by the council to be an engineer, uh, reporting on these projects?
There's, uh, I don't, there isn't a community benefits, a proposal that's been made by the project proponent or by the city council at this point.
No, no other proposal?
There's no, no proposal. There's, uh, been no meeting to discuss, uh, CBA. This is, uh, just an information session as to what does a CBA generally look like? Um, and my answer to questions from, from other members of the committee has always been to say, um, we're not at that point right now that there is anything, anything to look at.
I make the point because Ainsley was nominated as a partner in, uh, with Strategic, Strategy Court?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay, third. Exactly, this. I apologize. Third question, a conflict of interest to committee members and people who speak. I own several shares in TCE and several of the shareholders in TCE and WSP. Um, at what point in time would committee members be asked whether they own the shares in the top five banks in Canada? Because that may disqualify them from speaking and being a part of this committee. So I'd just like to leave that point with you and perhaps in future we could have a rule on conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We, any other questions?
Hi, my name is Karen Coleman and I live in Meford as well. Um, I would like some clarification on the environmental assessment procedure and, um, what, well, what will be tested, what's, um, what is, um, what's the scope, like what categories will be included, what will be not included? And will there be community im- in, input on that? And can you also please explain, um, whether there'll be a provincial environmental assessment? Cause I don't, I haven't heard too much about that. I've heard more about federal environmental impact and I've also heard that the scope of even having an environmental impact might just, there may not be any room for environmental impacts anymore because of, what is it, Bill Five? Bill, um, fa- uh, fast tracking and, uh, fast tracking projects and, um, um, eliminating environmental impact assessment or seriously, um, condensing them to be of no use to, um, us in Meford who care about our water quality, um, for all of Georgian Bay and beyond. And, and, you know, all the, all the things we've heard many times about wh- wh- what damage can be done to the environment. So I'd really like to hear you, um, talk a long time about that.
Uh, uh, I, I, I have some knowledge of the environmental impact, uh, work. I, I did work in National Resources Canada for four years, which, uh, administered much of the work, especially related to some projects. Um, but I am, uh, non-expert, like, uh, this is, that's what you'd have environmental engineers, et cetera, discuss. So, uh, so I can't speak too much to it. The one thing I would say is C five on major projects, they just put out, uh, the five first, the major projects out into the public. This was not one of them, so just put that there, uh, as, uh, one point. Um, as to any future changes to the environmental assessment process, couldn't tell you. Uh, that's not, uh, I'm not a member of the government of, the legal government of Canada or the provincial government of, uh, of Ontario. So I do not know if there's any changes that are going to be contemplated as a basis project. Um, as to what's usually in an environmental assessment process, uh, there will be an EA process to this project. Um, uh, not being an expert, I, I, I would just say is there will be. Um, but, uh, and water would be a part of it for sure. But as to how, uh, the EA processes, there's, uh, the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada, provincial, uh, environmental programs. Uh, and, uh, they do the first part of the process, um, which I do not believe has changed since my time in government is to explore what is in scope of an EA is the first step that they do in that process. As to that being done, it is not in the EA process right now as they still have not, um, the project proponent has not filed an application.
Right, so, so we're the cart before the horse sort of thing right now.
On the EA side, yes, as I discussed, there's no.
So if, if, um, the federal government or the provincial government says, oh, we don't have to have an EA anymore, will TCE say, well, no, we think we really still need an EA, we're going to go ahead with it? Or are you just going to be very happy that you don't have to do it?
I'm not a representative of TC.
Okay, well, that's my, that's.
Absolutely no idea.
You could maybe, uh, uh, put that forward, um.
I haven't expected it will be in EA, but that.
Yeah, well, it'd be nice if, if there wasn't one for you guys. Next, next question slash comment is, um, um, on the board of TCE and on the board of Strategy Court, are there any environmental scientists, um, are there any environmentalists?
Uh, so on the board of TC Energy, I do not know who the current board members of, uh, TC Energy are. So, uh, so I have no idea, uh, as to, uh, uh, whether any, we have a partnership. But, uh, in the partnership, we have, uh, liberal NDP sort of, uh, many of whom I would say are probably called as also environmentalists, uh, generally. Uh, but no, not any environmental engineers. And I think that was the first comment I made in my presentation was that we are not that per, that's not our.
Stretch court, that's not your job to have associations with those scientists, is that what you're saying?
That's not our role.
Okay, cause I'd really like to know, okay, well, my gen- where my question is coming from here is that criti- criticisms in general by environmentalists towards corporations is that the environmental science and history is lacking. Um, and decisions are made really aren't based on monetary basis. And so, what, that, that's not going to serve our, that's not going to serve our communities and i- in, in the future as we go forward, we're going to continue to degrade our environment. And so I'm just looking for, I, I, I'm, I, I think what's missing is that I, is that people don't know their history about the environment. They haven't read, they don't know what's happened before and they're going ahead and making decisions without really having um, a, a, a BFC, a master's, a P, they don't know what, they don't know what to ask. So, um, pardon? No, it's not, that was a comment, was the comment was, please, you know, read, be, be more informed. Okay, so wait, I'm getting off topic.
Okay, yeah, can I interrupt? I think, yeah, thank you for your comments. Appreciate. I think that's it for public comment. Thank you very much for participating. It's that, the next meeting will be, uh, Thursday, October ninth, twenty-five. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned.